We're going to, at this time, open up our regular session for December 20th, 2017. It's now 10:00 a.m., and I'd like to ask everyone to please either silence or turn off their cell phones, and then join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Denise, maybe we can start out with any additions or deletions?
Sure. We have three additions. Mr. Johnson from our planning department is bringing forward a proposal to lease a copier in our department. Mr. Vermon has brought forward, he wants to just provide a brief summary of gentlemen for a solar project going on in Portac, and they're going to accept the resignation.
Oh, boy. So with that, I think that's appropriate, that's probably that particular addition's one we will take up first, Commissioner, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, absolutely. My agenda fits that part of the agenda.
Okay.
So, we have a resignation which we've received from our administrative assistant, Denise Doorstep, so I'll wait for discussion to say much more, but I'll move to accept that resignation from Denise Doorstep at this time.
And I like you, I'll wait for discussion too, I'll second that. It's been moved and segmented to accept Denise Doorstep's resignation effective sometime in 2020, sometime today, I'm uncertain, but we'll open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to definitely put Denise, know my gratitude and appreciation for the years of service that you've given Lake County, our citizens, the Board of Commissioners, your continued support as you're here today working with our new person, and what we talked about a little later. Your commitment to continue on even whenever you're going to be, you're changing for life, or you're moving to another place, and you're still going to be available on the phone. That shows the commitment to Lake County, and appreciation that you give back to us for the years that you've communicated to us by having you employed here. So, thank you so much for your time, your dedication. You will be truly missed. Thank you very much.
Don't make me cry.
Well, we've talked about this over the last month, and I probably can't talk what Commissioner Winters just said, but it's with great sadness that we are accepting your resignation. We do, you know, as a county family, thank you more than just our administrative assistant, you've known that. You're going to be going on to a new, wonderful stage in your life, and we really support you and appreciate that, that that's going to be happening. And we're just indebted to you like there's no way to explain it.
Same here. It's kind of odd, not how it works, so.
Well, it's been very obvious, you know, the neat thing, Denise, is it's not just obvious to Lake County and to the board, and all of our other departments and elected officials, it's obvious to the other counties, you know, when you're out and about, your pride in what you do in the county, it comes through completely to them, and they talk about that, so, thank you.
It's a good place.
So with that, we're going to go ahead and do you?
We have a call for the questions.
Yeah. We're not done yet.
Yes.
Wrap it up.
So, all in favor?
I'm thinking about abstaining. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The resignation accepted. So, with that, we're going to go on to another neat stage in our county family, and that's the introduction of our new administrative assistant, Melanie Buzini. She started on Monday, I wasn't here.
She did.
And Melanie's been working with Denise these last few days in this transition, as Commissioner Winters mentioned. We're very excited about her being here. It's kind of a, it's kind of a hard feeling, as much as we're going to miss Denise, we're really glad Melanie that you're here, we're really looking forward to your work in that, running that department, and being part of the county family, so we definitely want to publicly welcome you today, so.
I've had the great pleasure, the last couple of days, of spending a little time with Melanie and Denise, as we met, I have an update on I and T a little bit later, talked special transportation, and enthusiasm that Melanie brings forward. I think that we've made a very good selection, we're forward, we're very welcome for it.
Just for the record, from my standpoint, I've had the pleasure of working with her for two days. She is going to be great, she is very excited to be here, I'm not going to speak for her, but I would tell you, just working with her, she's very excited to be here. Her first comment to me was, wow, your job's a lot more than I thought it was going to be. And I kind of looked at her and went, uh-oh, was that me? But she came back on Tuesday, so that was very good news. I think she's going to be a bright fit, and she's going to represent you and the county. It's going to be great, great meeting.
So Melanie, would you like to say anything, or?
Sure. Of course. I'm equally as excited. The job is more than I expected, but I welcome that, and I'm not scared. I plan on working hard for the county, the citizens, and the team. I'm very excited.
Very good. Well, as I said, welcome aboard, and we will, at this time, continue on with our regular board meeting. So our next item will be Jim and Ann, the USDA Rural Grant. Morning, Jim.
Morning. Thank you, Commissioners. Welcome, Melanie, and don't listen to Denise about how pissed I could be, this'll do that.
No, thanks.
But I want to thank both you Commissioners yesterday for testimony for Red Rock. It wasn't the outcome we wanted, but it's half light, and I'm sure we'll get there. That was excellent testimony from both of you, it really was. I really appreciate your listening, man.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for being able to go over these last six years, and I just, I do need to give a little caveat, I haven't had a chance, Ann and I wanted to visit Commissioner Winters, I really appreciated what he had to say, but having talked to the committee ahead of time, I'll just say for the record, I did have a planned or a different speech, but it included that, but they were very clear, they supported this completely, and, you know, went into all of the benefits, so thank you for those kind words. It wasn't exactly what I planned, I mean, it was what I was planning on saying, but there was, there was more to it.
It was very appropriate. I had a planned speech, but that opportunity, they'd already heard enough support for it, no problem. But that, I, it was great what you two did, I really do appreciate it, in fact, sincere with me, that's not a public statement, that's a truth.
Thank you, appreciate that. I did have a call with Jeff this morning, and everything's right on track, but it's halfway there, 110 million, or halfway there, secures the obligation for the BOD $70 million, and they intend on getting right back to the committee, early part of January.
I plan on submitting a letter on other benefits to play off what you two had said, and then also the economic, ecological, and climate change, you know.
And that would be great, Jim, because as Commissioner Winters mentioned, you know, we both didn't talk about the rail line, we didn't talk, there was many things, but they understood that, they completely understood that, but I want to make a quick comment, and it was, it was kind of a flashing light when Commissioner Winters was saying that, because we weren't sure today what we could say, but Commissioner Winters did talk to Jeff on the phone. I'd sent him an email, and he reiterated what he talked to Commissioner Winters about, and I think that's a key part, because we all sunk a little yesterday, but at the same time, being there, I believe there was a light at the end of the tunnel, but it was a pretty bright light, but Commissioner Winters got that confirmed, but what I wanted to say on your behalf, there were at least 20 people on the phone, at least 20 people on the phone, and that room was packed, and Laura Lockwood-McCall, the chair, said to me, and then I think she said it in an open session, that they've never had that kind of outpouring of support.
She did say that.
Okay. Well, it was amazing, you know, the state folks with Oregon Business were saying the same thing. They clearly understand how important this is, and fortunately, through the discussion that Commissioner Winters was able to have with Jeff this morning, we truly believe, I think we're still in that mode of that 99.9% certainty, it's going to happen, and we couldn't have a more bright Christmas related to our community and the benefits. So, thank you for being here.
And I learned something, I always said the Fisher Trophy process, we've known about it for a long time, and what Hitler did, but could you do it after, and now with that testimony yesterday, that there's two other nations in the world that are using it on other products, natural gas and coal, I did not know that, so I learned yesterday too, you know? And then Goldman Sachs testimony about not getting the full mountain, this made me sick, like you said, but after I thought about it, hearing what you said, had a conversation, I thought, you know, that's just a play, they want to come across strongly. In the end, in January, I think that conclusion will come about, and that would be timely for their April deadlines and all that, so.
Exactly, and they were very clear that they were going to make sure it could happen.
Yes. The chair multiple times said, you can come back for a special session, we would welcome you.
Yeah. So, very good. I didn't see any wink, wings being in person, but I knew that they were there, so.
That's far more important than what I'm here for today, that's why.
The only issue.
No, no.
Quite honestly, as you listened to all of that, Jim, and I know Commissioner Winters and many others did, so much of that financial market on stuff was flying over my head, so I sat there, and I just have to share this since she's here, I thought of one person specifically that I really wished would have been there, because she would have hid up in that same front line.
Yeah, and she could have probably understood this.
That's it. She completely didn't understand, this is what they meant, because it was like, holy cow, there's no way I understand that. Fortunately, I didn't have to, so, so anyway.
Well, what I'm here for is USDA Rural Development has a grant program out for renewable energy development systems, and energetics, it's got to be one or the other, and they overlap, I won't go into that detail, but anyway, that's how they work, that's what they do. The eligible applicants are not nonprofits, the units of government and resource conservation and development districts that used to be with USDA, but some of them still survive as independents today who are eligible, but we're not one of those. And, you know, when I did my first retirement, that full-time, and then Bob decided to leave, Bob Rogers, we thought, you know, this is all, we've done a function, it's all in the private hands. That hasn't quite worked out for multiple reasons, retirement, the contractors, et cetera, there's a bunch of reasons, that didn't quite work out. It came clear to me with this opportunity, it's an opportunity to bring Bob Rogers back. He's been in South Africa teaching the orphans how to weld and build rights, and it is, you know, creative, but this would be an opportunity, or someone like him, he's going to be here over Christmas, and we'll be talking more about that. And the program is outlined for businesses and agriculture. So, back in, I think, 2013, we did 15 some audits for businesses in Lakeview and around the county, and mostly did energy efficiency type programs, because at that time, solar was too costly to pencil that out. Well, that's dropped since that time by 2/3 to the price. So it is time to go back, and I've outlined some 29 businesses, this didn't like you alone, that have roofs that with an engineering consultant, we could go look at to see if they could support solar and be added, and it could be, it could be, and I want to emphasize could be, I don't have that economic, you know, beneficial, economic, because of that price reduction stamp. So it's worth going back and to help save those businesses overhead dollars and do that. And I also want Bob back, because when the PUC finalizes their workbook on community solar, I've already got the interest of the schools, the hospital, to do a community solar, we think it could be a 3-megawatt system to offset, and actually make them, all of them almost in zero buildings. So I need that engineering assistance, I'm not the engineer, and Bob is. So that's what we want to apply for, and ask you to be the applicant, and LCRI will be the lead and take that on, and work with Ann to get this grant application in. I plan on having this done, my goal is by the end of next week, I'm not sure, but that's my goal, and get it to John Holman at Rural Development, because he wants to review it before we submit it. So, the history's been with Rural Development is usually like a two-time process, because you make mistakes and have to do things. I want to make it one, and so John's offered to help with that, and I want to get it to him so he has time to get back to us. So I'm asking, you know, for you to let Ann and I submit that application on behalf of Lake County.
So, on that, we have done similar things over the years, it'd be a pass-through grant, our obligation would not be an employee or nothing like that, if your money goes in, goes right on out to LCRI, and you manage to employ, and all those things.
There'll be some work on Ann's part.
You have to be the administrative side of it.
You know, and as I do with my, all my grants, I track all expenditures by grant and stuff, so I can give full accounting to Ann and you guys.
I know you two have been working together, I don't know, Ann, did you everything you wanted to add to that?
No, it was just nice to see that this actually does go through the State Rural Development Office first, it's not a federal, national, semi-nally goes to the state, so I think the process is a little bit cleaner, easier, so.
Well, we really appreciate your willingness, that you've been so engaged in so many of these things of recent in particular that are huge, and Jim's grant that he wants to apply for, we're quite certain will be successful, will be beneficial to the community at large, so I'm totally on board with you.
I would like to say also, to ask for, what's your experience? And I went back to, and I think we started this in 2008, this renewal, and I started outlining all the things in Lake County that's got accomplished. I tell you, it impressed me, I would go, wow, that's not bad, we've done a lot, so I hope it impresses them, that's what, you know? Yeah. It was amazing, I would, I just, you know, I don't think about past, you know, it's just like.
Well, you move on, you're always looking at the future, but I need to, editorializing you, and you're sorry, but Laura Lockwood-McCall mentioned that yesterday before the meeting, about how progressive Lake County has been in the renewable energy arena, so hats off again, Jim.
So, I believe by consensus of the board Commissioners, we could allow that or like that by motion?
I think consensus is fine.
It's in the minutes, because we have to have the legal authority in the application.
Let's make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we allow application for a grant and pass-through through Lake County and from Ryan Mowbray with Jim Walz, LCRI, that's an energy grant, yes, on an energy grant, that will be a pass-through.
No, I'll second it, it's been moved and segmented to approve Lake County being the pass-through agent, Jim Walz will be working with Ann from our treasurer on the USDA Rural Energy Grant that Jim will be applying for. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, yes, very much. Okay, we have at 10:30 our next timed item, and so in the manner of giving our road superintendent back out on the road, we're going to go ahead and call on. Morning, Jim.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Good morning. So, this is for one distributor, you have in front of you two different summer reports, we'll talk about the truck first.
Okay.
We discussed, well, I discussed with all three Commissioners, actually, our interest in moving towards kind of being in our own control of shooting our own oil as time goes on, in discussing the oil measures, recognize that we'll probably get a little bit brighter, because we don't have to have so much scheduling, third-party vendor, so that's what this is moving towards. Truck chassis was selected or is being inspected, make sure that it works for this distributor in coordination with Bearcat Incorporated. So this truck would be, this goes back $44,564 upon inspection approval, that is, we're working on it, we're going to take that truck and move to the next attached item.
Okay.
Which is the install of a distributor unit from Bearcat Incorporated. You guys have the attach, they do, that's attached to, okay. So several years ago, similar function took place for a single screw truck, this is, this truck will be a tandem, and we'll be able to manage 3,800 gallons of oil, so that we can keep our efficiencies and productivities up. This distributor kind of retrofit with Bearcat is a specialized company. This would act as 118,828 gallons. I put not to exceed there, because there are some other options that, just in discussion with the guys from Bearcat, we might be able to minimize, so, not to exceed.
So Kevin, you have talked to all of us individually, thank you so much for that, and you ran this all by legal counsel as far as us able to accept these as individual, or a sole source type, or as you accept this, primarily talking about the truck probably first, with our contract review board rules and that, the legal counsel is good, but...
Yep. Trucks that use chassis, yeah, we did reach out, look at internet, several vendors to see what we could find, there was some specifics that the company that's going to install a distributor on this truck wanted, so that it made better product for us, so narrow down to this specific truck, 2011 Kenworth.
I guess the only thing that, and legal counsel's not on the phone, is generally we have to have through quotes and that type of thing, or else if it's sole source, we can just do it under cert rules within our contract.
We've got Rule 8.
Rule 8, okay.
Rule 9. Rule 9 on the truck, and I have, and it's not attached to this, and I could have, yes, done that, several, several of the other trucks that we looked at already had old dump beds on them, grain haul beds on them, things that were going to cost us additionally to either to remove or get rid of, ended up being more money, so that's what, that's what we've ended up with this one.
If I would have read a little closer, I would have seen they had Rule 9 on there, my bad, thank you. So on the truck, I'd like to make a motion to accept the price of $44,564 for the purchase of the truck, following review board rule number nine.
I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept the quote for the Kenworth, 2011 Kenworth truck in the amount of $44,564 using Lake County Review Board Rule Number Nine. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You got a truck, yeah, Kevin, let me see if you get the rest.
So distributor install and all the work provided to complete this project, if you will, number, Rule Number Eight, single source contract, Bearcat manufactured single source of disqualified product that we require, that we require higher, and also what our operators are used to do.
So I'll make a motion to accept the purchase of the said equipment, purchase impact $119,828 not to exceed under Rule Eight.
And I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to accept the asphalt distributor quote from Bearcat in the amount of $119,828 using Lake County Review Board Rule Number Eight. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to tell Kevin, thank you for his research on this, working for efficiencies, this will come back to us over years on efficiencies, there's a lot of money today, but it'll pay back to us in relatively, in government's short enough time, those efficiencies, I don't mean to speak for Dan, but Dan and I for sure have always looked, tried to look for vision, efficiencies that come back to the people, to our community, and thank you for doing that.
This certainly, this certainly will, this will be, fits right into the plan very well.
No, that's great, you will, will second, sure, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now Kevin, I know you've got to run, but I'm going to ask you, under department updates, you and crew have been very busy lately, do you have anything you'd like to add to the discussion today for your department?
So, for the last several weeks, we've been working several different regions and projects. In Summer Lake area, we've been reworking drainage facilities and road surfaces, working with the BLM through a section of wilderness study area, in a project that was planned out many, many years ago. In District Five, we are, have done extensive work to Bear Flat Lane, which was a road that came with a high number of customer concerns when I first got this job, for low shoulders, for visibility concerns, and in working with Forest Service and understanding and kind of coordinating our right of way through there, where we are brushing out for sight distance concerns also along that road as well, we installed 30, 15 mile, 15 mile of shoulders on that road.
30 miles off.
30 miles off. Put the delineation up, and mileposts had already been, that was kind of like the first step. And the rest of the crew is down here continuing efforts on the Dog Lake project, making preparations for, starting in April, putting in concrete inlet boxes, underdrain, I think, unless my phone didn't work, I sent you guys a couple pictures the other day.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Removing this rock wall, and straightening out a section of another area that, with the exemptions we've got for guide rail to allow for clear zone, so we're doing that currently, all those things, and milestones.
So on the project, yeah, and you're not going to say much about the snow, are you?
No, not at all.
Okay. Since I have to drive back and forth to Paisley every day, I appreciate you not saying anything about the snow, so, sure. So on the Dog Lake project, just a question, how's the timing going to be between Forest Service completing a rebuild in that area, and where we're at with our construction?
Some of the constructability that the Forest Service is doing to fix their issues is happening, they're taking care of that right now, which doesn't contribute one way or another to us, or we're not holding each other up. Looking into the future and into the summer, we've coordinated initial stages with Forest Service to entertain an interagency agreement to pave that section for them. to entertain an interagency agreement to pave that section for them before or after we pave ours, so that we both entities minimize the kind of exposure and traffic and holding each other up. Well, I know our new road is going to be built in such a way it can handle heavy truck traffic, but that was a question I had, is the timing of the new, the final section of our Dog Lake project versus running trucks over that in the future to the other projects? I don't, I don't think that's going to be a great deal of concern because I think a lot of, in, in working with them and, and their own scheduling, they're trying to do as much as they can now. So that, that will be minimized this spring while we're working there.
Okay.
Two questions. Road advisory, especially in March, I think that we still have an open position for a road advisory, remember?
Yes.
District one, I think. District one here in the valley. So we need to have a recommendation to let people on that. The other thing, Kevin, I know you've just been spawned, but we're, we're continuing on this renewable energy and solar in our right-ways and our pilot groups, along with our county roads. They did the information there a couple of weeks ago, or last time they tabled it, last week, I guess, visit. I think we're, sooner than later, going to have to work to get a policy together that makes it better for you as these investor developers come in, so that, or if calls and other departments and everything, this is, we're able to say, this is our policy. So I think you have the key part of that, of what you want to see in our right-ways. The gap for it to be buried, the furthest to the side of the road or whatever. So maybe take that information as far as this and everything. Work with each of us or something. We're probably going to get that going sooner than later, get that policy in place because we're getting calls, whether it's our planning department or it's our facilities department. And I had a call yesterday, we have the presentation that was supposed to be today to, to know what, what do we allow our property to allow? I was surprised.
What are we going to ask, what, what can we allow, what we not allow? Their questions to you is, if, can we allow it all, or specifics right down to how it's installed?
Well, I think that we have to allow it by the ORS, as I gave you. So we don't have any choice.
Yeah.
The only choice we really have is, is who they contact. How, what's the process? Who they contact, and what it has to be designed and built to, or installed to. Who's responsible for all that? And if it's all spelled out, and then whenever we get the call, or another one, our department gets a call, is this is our policy. Go to the road, ask her if that's where it's going to be. He makes the decision. And what triggers something that's unusual, parties come to the board and you know that.
No, that, I think that's exactly right.
We had a little discussion last meeting about it, Commissioner.
Hadn't dealt with it before. This is beyond the normal request that you get for uses on the right-of-way. So we just needed to make sure we had a policy in process that worked. Dave asks questions, you know, he asks people, kind of talks to me. So yeah, we can get there, with a solid policy on point of contact. I can't help, I believe it'd be a road superintendent, so.
I think there was three or four examples from other counties. It's just a matter of doc, the board of commissioners adopting the right policy. Because by ORS, we're supposed to go all by us.
Yeah.
Or whatever. And I, I don't think that's efficient for the things to.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll catch up sometime, a little later. Nothing, nothing big.
Okay.
So we had a timed item at ten-thirty, and Darwin is going to be a little bit later than that.
He's going to be running late to Christmas.
Oh, no.
The Christmas, uh.
You can't miss that.
Yeah. Recite, not recite, program.
Program.
So I think I'd like to have Dave come up, if you would. Dave, you've got a couple items on your hands, got some things with you.
I want to hit on the solar, I'm going to kind of follow up with God, that Christopher, I don't know his name. He was going to come in and talk and try and tell you guys what he is doing in the Fort Rock area for the part of solar. There's a few roads he wants to go down, and then we're back to that. What avenue we go to get that, or him to get permission to do that, and the permits and all that. So he couldn't make it, he flew in, but he couldn't get over there, he fell in the porch, and the snow kind of put him behind. So he sent me an email saying that he'll probably try to come in and talk to you guys this afternoon individually, if you guys were around. I told him, I know, well, you guys have a plan, but pretty sure you guys wouldn't be around. If not, we could sit down and talk. So he's, so that's why he's not here to.
So as you will look to, it gets back to the road issue of right-of-way access that we haven't really well defined.
Exactly. And that's what he wants to, he, he just doesn't know. I don't know, so that's where we need to get something in place. So I can, when I do get those phone calls, I'm not sitting there going, uh. Yeah. Because each, each situation is always different. It's not never the same. So it's, you know, like up city, and when they were, you know, their stuff, I'm stuck, right? That was easy because we can already have a system, or whatever you want to call it. But up there, it's all new, because there's private land involved, there's county roads involved, there's private roads involved. So that's kind of where, we're at with that, so.
And I, I received probably yesterday on another solar project myself. We just need to get.
But we need, when we get those calls, we need to know what to do. Because Darwin runs it the same thing I do. He's like, oh, what do we do here, or do I go to him? Or it's like, it's kind of a confused thing for everybody, because it's all new.
Well, I think Commissioner Winters laid it out pretty well to our road secretary, and we'll hopefully get a policy here a little later.
There's some other place out there.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll be good.
And then another thing I got is the East Cascade Workforce Investment Lease Agreement. I've got that, and I think you guys have it, it's kind of short, sweet, but that's kind of how we put it together when Ann and.
Heather.
Heather. Yeah, Heather's kind of worked on it. They just wanted it to cover everything as short as possible, and I think they accomplished that. We're ready to move forward, I feel, anyway, unless you guys have any other ideas, suggestions. Ann, if you have any.
I, I think that's what we scored up last time, was for Jim and for everybody to fully review it.
And then on that note, we've, we've got the one-story room completed. Sheriff's Office, they moved their stuff out, we're going to do tomorrow, we're going to start moving their stuff into the new story facility that we picked together for the sheriff, and then we'll get ready. We should be ready the first week of January for the workforce.
That's, that's perfect. And, you know, as we've talked about this having a location that's going to be great for the county and the services here, but great for the citizens. And it's a, it's a, I think it'll be a super office for the workforce. This, this is kind of a miniature home, and maybe an inside park. I don't know what we would have, but it's, it's a good thing. So thank you for all your work and all your crews with getting this ready operationally and for Ann and her work together and putting this together.
So what, what kind of deal would it be, January one? January second?
Yeah, I think that would be a perfect. Ann, do you see any problem with that?
No.
So I make the motion to accept the East Cascade Workforce Investment Board Lease Agreement, effective the first business day of January two thousand eighteen. We need to change that.
Yeah. I'll second it. It's been moved and segmented to approve this leasing of Lake County's Cascade Workforce Investment Boards, commencing on the second day of January two thousand eighteen. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, Mr. Carries.
So you said there's an update to this one? Do we need to change for signatures or something?
No, we need to change the.
Two thousand eighteen?
Eighteen to the very first.
On the top?
Yeah.
So once we get a new copy, I'll let them sign it.
Perfect. So Dave, same view, since you're here. Am I missing anything here? I wanted to go to department updates, if you can.
I, I think you're grateful to stick around.
Yeah.
When we did the department I, I T updates, you know, I think you have an update on that.
Oh, yeah.
Particular ones.
Yeah.
But I think it would complement. Don't you think?
Yep.
I do have, on the industrial park, Marcus has gone, he purchased his own facility already. He's doing very well, pretty proud of us. Three-month deal, but he really rocked it, and he's got business, he can't keep up with it. So I feel that's a success for the county, for us to be able to help someone get their own business going and moving on. And Ginger was part of all that.
And thank you, Ginger.
It's done great.
I thought the incubator building was.
Yeah, if you want to keep there a little bit longer.
Well, like you said, you've been, you know, involved with fairly frequently, but the few times I've been down there, it's like every time there's a new client, and it's not just for a particular rig for that day, it's a new client for services. He's, he's.
Yeah, he could, he could, he had hired employees.
So do, do you have the new address, or where he's located?
Well, I did the old, you bought the.
The recital place on the green, Humble's Place. A Humble's Green has been cleaned up, the whole arms of the tires will be done, it's going to be their privacy, but uh, it just flows from him going there to there to his ability to.
So kind of a, kind of a news and range, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. It was, it was a perfect scenario. Well, it's, it's, it's pretty nice compared to what we came to last year with the incubator building, so. It's huge. It's a nightmare.
Oh, yeah.
To say.
Yeah.
There's more things going on by night.
That's right.
Yeah, exactly. So he needs to start gearing up, because when Red Rock starts to build, there are going to be even more truck businesses.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I know Dog Lake uses them a lot, I know a few other people that are doing business.
I've seen, I've seen a lot of different.
I've saw Stobbs in there, I've saw, uh, Ready Next.
Yeah, I've seen Brad Winters rig there one day.
Thank you, Dave.
So that's all I have for us.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll come back to you a little bit later. So our next item is legislative vacancy appointing discussion. Commissioner, do you want to chat a little bit about that?
If I can do it, out of the simple, I guess, there is a vacant position open in our district on the Senate side. Senator Perry only has moved on, so that open that position. That gives all counties that are within that district a vote to appoint from selection, whoever they selected to come forward to give this all a vote, to be a process of appointing to replacement for that position. I don't remember the three names, but I will say that Representative Cliff Benson's put in for it, received several different emails of support, Cliff Benson. We can be in the pro, we are in the process, either by conference call or in person. And they haven't set that sluit date, but it'll be the week of January second to the January fifth. And we'll be in John Day, or at this point, I intend on participating by phone. I mean, because, just to be very honest, it's pretty simple for me. Representative Cliff Benson's outstanding, and that's where I'm at at this point, unless somebody tries me. I don't feel like I'm the person.
Well, your comment on how we feel about it, Mr. Ray, couldn't agree with you more. I reached out to Hall, right? She's in compliance specials for the election division, she's setting up. Me, ask her to send out another email, just clearing that up a little bit, that it was more than adequate to be on the phone. And quite frankly, as you alluded to, the cost of driving to John Day for a get-together to listen to the three members that are seeking this office, I, I too have a lot of faith in Representative Benson. And I'm going to be, for sure, calling in on the telephone, contract order, John Day, they costing us a tremendous amount, just to cast a vote, so.
That's my intent also at this time.
Okay. So Darwin has joined us. So we will go back to our ten-thirty item. Hi, Darwin.
Morning. Thanks for pushing me back.
No problem.
So, a little road vacation, South M Street, like we get the catalog, there's what would be, would be Fifth Fleet Street, south, and it's also described on the tax law map, so it's a Californian. We're talking about a little strip to the west of South M Street, which abuts the rail. What you have highlighted on your maps, it's also the extending portion on the east side of the rail, which is, again, a very, very small section, there's absolutely no need for a road there. Obviously, the rail would say, you guys can put glass crossings. This was previously plotted to the rail coming in. The two roads weren't vacated at that time, but now it makes sense that they vacate those after requested by Mr. Carlin. There's also, as you see, highlighted a portion of an alleyway between property that the county owns right there as well.
So Darwin looking at this map, so. And if we do a vacation, and it doesn't want to be done administratively, the property goes to the joint economic business. So this is Carlin's here. Is this back here county?
That's county, as is the alley.
Are we vacation, are, are we doing a property vacation on that?
Now, Mr. Carlin's only asked for the one portion, but as plan director, it's also my recommendation, since a hundred percent ownership is agreeing to this, if you guys do today, then that's, that's what we're going to do, is vacate those.
Vacate the alley.
And it's county-owned property, so it makes sense that.
Well, and it's, it's a stack yard, and we, Dave, I don't know if you can. This one, to me, it's very simple, I just want clarification on county-owned property to make sure.
We've, we've done, I think, two of these already this year, where, you know, a hundred percent ownership remains to it. The ORS language allows us to vacate without a hearing, so today you couldn't make that decision, so please.
Well, we, we need to do it, Darwin, or just by consensus, give you direction.
It is a board decision. It's a board decision according to the statute, okay? And an order's made, and I have a draft order to pack it up.
Yep.
Sign it and accord it.
So Commissioner, I don't have any other questions.
Yep.
You don't have no concerns at all?
Is that the same road that we did, we're down with the Ready Next? Remember we were all through that? On that platter road? So that's, that's what they.
It's the next block.
It's the next.
After we sold them that land, they have an alley still between land and road, but we'll see.
So I'll accept the recommendation of the order, the vacation, the matter of vacation proceeding to certain public land within Lake County as described in the order.
I will second it. It's been moved and segmented to, in the order of vacation, the matter of vacation proceeding of certain public land within Lake County, to approve this said vacation as presented in our document. Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, Mr. Carries. Okay.
Do you have any other time item or can I address?
No, you, we want you to go ahead and address this on the next item.
So for some time, we've been looking into a better solution for a printer dropped off this purchase by tiny building. And onsite, first year I got, so 2011. And the printer is under a maintenance agreement. We purchased that outright. It's got a maintenance fee that also includes 1,500 base copies, black and white, for roughly $30 a month, pretty many dollars and two cents. So that agreement is still in place. What our proposal is today, being building by gentleman's students and myself and planning is to enter into a lease agreement for Canon printer, which will give us more service than what we've been getting now. We're adding a stapler option to it, which ensures that will allow it to staple that to a Snap-on, which is extremely nice. And four doors, we've got two that works and it saves us money. We're actually getting a better deal for a color printer than what our accessory. Clerk's office got, which is kind of surprising because anyways, I won't go into the whole story, but it saves us money. And with the old printer, copier, means that were still in the lease were roughly $30 a month. There's been a need that I've discussed before with each of you, but for the land sale to retain one in the surveying department as well. So that money would come out of that planning department. And previous to this, it had been agreed upon that the surveyor would pay a portion of the bill. Both plan and billing, I didn't think that was appropriate because of our need is way greater than surveying. Surveyor actually didn't budget any money, even though there was a line item for it. So I've talked to Darrell Anderson and we've said that it would be just split 50-50, the new machine between planning and billing. Which also covers a field program.
So you're, this is different than what you and I discussed.
This is, this is a bit different than what you and I discussed.
So this again brings us back to printers in a very small area. I 100% agree that the printer in Darlin's department needs to be replaced. It's, when it was purchased, it was not meant for the amount of use that it has been getting. So, and it was purchased again because it was not being used for the amount of work that it is now. It does make more sense to lease this machine because of the use that it is getting. Machine that they have now has significant downtime. Broken a lot. I'm not even sure that it's even repaired truly at this point in time. I think it is functioning, but I wouldn't call it repaired. So I do agree that that machine needs to go away. It does not need to be moved. I disagree in the point where it needs to be moved to the surveyor's office. There's, that office is small enough that this new printer is big enough and it's leased and it's going to serve a purpose for all three of them. So I don't, I don't agree with moving that machine, especially that particular machine, because it is, it's, it's worn out its life cycle. It is, it is a ruined-out machine. So my recommendation is to approve the replacement of the new machine with the new Canon. But I, I would not, I would not support moving the printer. I, I miss that part. So as the IT is now leaving, but that's, that's just my, my two cents.
Yeah, and I definitely respect Denise, because I know it's been a long. The, the problem that we have in our offices, you know, we do a whole lot of printing. You know, the Canon is going to be a brand-new machine and it's going to be great. And I don't think there'll be too much downtime. However, you know, we, we serve a lot of public in there at multiple times in different offices and different entrances to each office and office I'm called. Works very well to have Karen, a machine of her own and us to have a machine of our own in the other areas as well. But one thing I do want to bring up is that the current machine that we have is under maintenance agreement. And they are to fix that machine. It functions now perfectly well except for the duplex. So we've talked to them, they are having a hard time finding a part for that piece. This word is still beyond them to try to get that fixed. And if they fix it, great. If they don't, then we just won't be able to do it. But in the meantime, $30 for 1,500 copies is a great price. Where we still have options to do color and you charge the public for many copies and it makes sense to.
So the maintenance agreement is $30.
Yeah, yeah.
Our new agreement's $172 a month.
The new agreement's $172.
Yeah. Well, I.
Try to break down the cost.
I guess in comparison, I'm trying to get the numbers around this. Thought everything that went through. Commissioner, from several different other offices on this board, he's one, one printer.
Josh uses our printer, he runs upstairs.
Yeah, I, I, I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with where there's a common door, you run on the hallway, go 25 feet and get to the computer. If you're, if you're tied up on the phone, struggling to pay $30 a month and have two printers.
And well, you know, I mean, we have many departments. I mean, this isn't, I mean, this, we, we could debate this all with more, but.
Let me, let me add this. My concern is more with the fact of the machine that he's wanting to move into that other office. That machine is opposed, it's tired, it's a very tired machine. We're going to keep pouring, we're going to keep having a lot of downtime is my concern with that machine. If, if it came to a point where they needed a desktop as a second backup, that's, that's one thing. To just get with Canon and have just a, a desktop. I'm not completely opposed to that. I do think it's kind of pushing it with as many people and as far as people have to go to other printers, they're, they're in the same neighborhood. Again, her having to go around and that, that is an inconvenience for our public, but it's 30 seconds, it's not a big thing. But I would more focus on replacing it with a desktop because eventually that machine, when the maintenance agreement goes, are we going to put another machine in?
I have to clarify because I've always struggled with how many printers we have throughout here. I always have, but when you talk Canon desktop, would it be networking to the?
Absolutely.
So it can be networked into that one? And what kind of cost to have a desktop networked in for the convenience? Because it's really.
It's not, it's not a cost to network it in. The cost is for if we're going to lease it or purchase it, at that point in time, we would probably want to purchase it as a desktop. Desktops don't typically cost that much, they don't typically last as long. You can still do the maintenance agreement. The maintenance agreement on a desktop is going to be a lot less than the maintenance agreement on these big machines. It's a big machine, that's a big machine, that's going to take up a lot of space and it's going to be down a lot. A desktop, you're going to pay a lower, lower maintenance amount per month on that machine. So I, my, my feeling, so take it for what it is, my recommendation would be more focused on that. I'm not 100% opposed to them having a second printer. There's other departments that have done that. But we really worked to move away when I first started. You'll remember, we had a printer everywhere, toner cartridges everywhere. We had a closet full of toner cartridges that we ended up throwing, I don't even know how many thousands of dollars of toner cartridges away because they didn't go to anymore or they had expired. So we worked really hard to move away from that and put in just general printer, you know, group, group them together. We had the one in the hallway for a long time and now we located to the assessor's office once the library went away. So being more printers isn't always good. It's not always bad. I mean, it's more efficient for their office during certain times of the year. Maybe you have one that they only use for certain times of the year. There, there are ways to work around that. I just, the machine that is in there, I, I don't support moving that particular machine. I just don't support that. We have, we have just had too much downtime on that machine.
Exactly. There's a lot of why need a backup. So talk about needing.
We do have backup. That's, that's not a fair comment. We do have backups.
Yeah, let me, let me just see if I can summarize what I heard and say what you requested. You've requested access to the second printer in the surveyor's office, correct?
Yep.
And Denise, you've suggested it will be more, it'll be as efficient and less costly. We just simply purchase a desktop printer and hook it to the network. So it resolves what you want, Darwin, and it saves money and it's new and it's more.
It costs money. We're going to have to purchase another printer. We already own a printer that's under lease right now that I still have to get out of at a certain point and give them notice when they have to lease.
Then why are we replacing the printer at all?
$30 a month because it's still going to save us money. Buying, buying a second, this other printer still saves me money over the printer that I have. Because of the amount of usage that it gets, we are paying a way greater price per page on colors and overages for black and white when we use the current printer than what we will be getting. It's almost 11 cents per color and it's going down to less than four cents. And it's two cents and a little bit more than two cents for black and white over the 1,000, the 1,500. And it's going down to less than a penny per copy now. So both, when we print 5,000 plus copies in that office, you know, it's going to save us money. And I can come with another spreadsheet, but.
Well, so Darwin, with that said, the desktop would be saving you money too because you get that two cents. And you get that four cents because that desktop is going to get that same.
Desktop will cost you more per cent than, than will a larger printer.
But if it's under.
It's networked.
Because if it's networked, then we got to enter into a lease and we're paying a lease agreement. So, or a maintenance agreement of some kind. I'll just tell you, we're going to disagree. I've done the numbers, this fits and it's going to save us money, what happened to. That's the bottom line and I can easily show you guys that. Now, yes, had some downtime, but that's, I think, large will do to the amount of use that they're going. So.
So if, obviously there's ownership both ways. We're tasked with doing the best thing, most efficient way to here and the right thing, Darwin. So the machine that you're wanting to keep at $30 a month, if we don't keep it, where does it go? What's the value in it?
Then we'll need to figure out what we want to do with that. We spent roughly $2,800 on it.
Eight years ago.
Six and a half, almost seven years earlier.
But it has got some value.
Yeah, it's got a lot, it's definitely got value. So, I mean, we could surplus it and try to sell it, or this money should come back to I and.
Well, that's.
We purchased that. I mean, it's our, that's why I've entered into this agreement with the, you know, with Canon to try to get the best services for our department. There's lots of times when I'm with clients, whether those are developers or whatever.
Happens when we have an add-on at the last minute. It hasn't been fully, fully put through. So where I'm sitting today is for the IT department and your department to probably kick this back to you and come with a recommendation that's the most efficient for the Canon.
So we've talked about the desktop and that not being something that we disagree on. But we haven't looked at those numbers. And I, I, I'm not prepared to say that that's the right move, but I do recognize that we need to. We, the three departments in there have all talked and it is what we've agreed upon and with their whole support as well. And through, again, I'm under a lease right now, it's going to save me money. And we talked about it budget time, if we're thinking it's a big, you know, God will put money on, I, the numbers are, are on paper. It's going to save us money. And now if we want to get rid of that old machine and replace it, that's fine, but I'm under a lease that needs to fulfill its lifetime and then we can work together to get rid of it. But the current situation saves me money by adding that.
Well, let me see if I've captured that we're in agreement that buying the Canon is a good thing. So we can approve that today, but I think that we have to have a time certainly come back after the discussion. We compare those, the old one, we're keeping that lease agreement in place, all of, all of that stuff versus buying a new state-of-the-art, fully functional desktop. So I, I think that, I don't know when we can do that.
I'm here next week.
Okay.
If I'm still part of that discussion, I'm happy. I'm happy to work with you on it. I just, this has been something we've, we've gone back and forth on for a few years now.
And we won't, we won't resolve it today's meeting, nor should we try to. So probably the most important thing is just agreeing with this Canon printer. And knowing we need to have a discussion on the second printer, whatever it's going to look like. Commissioner, are you okay with that?
I, I am.
It does say in here that the IT manager in the department has agreed on the Canon part.
On the summary?
Huh? Yeah, yeah. So.
So I'll make the motion to enter into a grease, enter into a lease for Canon or whatever number it is for the Canon printer. Lease amount to $172 and 10 cents a month.
No seconded? Discussion?
Just note that those signatures have to be board signatures. Try that.
Today, and then I just faxed it back to you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to enter into a under lease agreement with Canon. The amount of $172 and 10 cents a month. Any other discussion? You're now all in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
So I do want to add, as we move into money-taking on this position, we do have a policy for purchasing. And I appreciate all of the work that Darwin has done on this. I'm not slamming it in any way. I just want to make sure in the future because we've had a couple of miscommunications on printers. We now have to do printers we don't really want and we are stuck with. That's why it runs through the IT so that we don't come before you with surprises.
You jumped in before I was able to say much there. Thank you for that, Denise. We definitely, Commissioner, if we're going to have our primary management issues, our IT contract department, that needs to be the first question that we ask. Is having to go through our IT contract person and is this important?
Yep.
So that policy needs to be put in place by us and needs to be here. So because it's about efficiency.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. And, you know, that's one of the, the maybe good things about being in office for a long time. We tried, whether it's in the IT world or the vehicle world, we tried it the other way. Numerous occasions, we tried modifications for inconveniences or extra steps that we need to go through with the policies we have on how we manage our equipment, our resources. It is well worth it. We, as I said, we have tried it. You, you've tried it even more than other people in the department, Commissioner. So yes, totally agree.
By next meeting, I would like to have the policy written up.
It's written, we have a policy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a policy in place.
You guys can have the discussion.
Copiers themselves, there's an IT policy that is inclusive of copiers.
We're going to have to pull it and make sure that we're.
If it needs to be amended or whatever, we need to do that.
Okay.
Because I think there's confusion out there amongst our, our county family of what is inclusive in IT.
And I, and I want to pat Darwin on that because he spent a lot of time getting this information. So it's, it's not easy to work with these, with ourselves, guys. They're, they're there to sell and they.
We got a smoking deal. Well, I mean, I was going to say we ripped him off.
Canon's been awesome.
No, I mean, we got an awesome printer for, I mean, because he messed up. No, I mean, we got an awesome printer for, I mean, because he messed up, he really did mess up when he tried to use it.
Does it seat four or something?
Four doors.
Thank you, Darwin.
My fifth capacity.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner, next item, Commissioner Chair Appointment and Vice Chair, okay, I, just for a little bit of discussion on this before there's anything done, historically, we wait till the first meeting in January, and now where are we trying to get ahead of ourselves, that that's usually a pretty busy time, we're transitioning and so forth, and I brought up the idea that it would be probably beneficial to just go ahead and make those appointments, we just rotate, unless there's some objections, and there typically hasn't been, we rotate those positions of Chair and Vice Chair every year, and by doing it today with the date that it will be effective, which would be the first meeting in, in January, which is January 2nd, I'd like to go ahead and do that today, and I would make the motion, do you believe, Commissioner, we should do those together?
You know, we.
We generally don't separate.
Yeah, we generally do separate, and it's, it's always that, Craig and I moment, Oxford moment, as you're doing these, but anyways, we've been very much following just the progressive that the Vice Chair steps up.
Yeah. So. I'm going to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Brad Winters as Chair effective January 2nd, 2018, of the Lake County Board of Commissioners.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Commissioner Brad Winters as our new Chair effective January 2nd of 2018, for calendar year 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Kestner as Vice Chair effective January 2nd, 2018.
I'll second it, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Commissioner Kestner as Vice Chair for the calendar year 2018, effective January 2nd, 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I missed an opportunity, railroad, I have to be chaired in that.
What's that?
I missed the opportunity, railroad, Commissioner Kestner.
Yeah.
Probably should have been, not managed to.
Next item, 2018 liaison appointments.
I, I don't know if there's anything. If, if there's anything there, I would defer to Ross, reporting here, but I have, I have, I'll speak for myself, there's nothing here that I need to change along the line.
No, I, given the changes that have happened this, this year, the additions, I really appreciate all the items, different departments that you've picked up, I've assumed a couple, so I definitely don't want to add anything to it, I think that a whole meaningful discussion as you said we can have is when we're all three here.
Yeah.
Okay, meeting minutes, what are the dates on those?
Dates are the 29th of November, the 5th of December, and the 6th of December.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I'll wish to approve the 29th, December 5th, and December 6th as presented.
I'll second it, it's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from November 29th to December 5th and December 6th as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Before we get to the department, I think this is okay with you, if we take just the five minutes, please.
I'm good with that.
Okay.